Good evening and welcome to the November 19, 2024 City Council Regular Hybrid Meeting. I'm Mayor Salim Nees and this evening's Hybrid City Council meeting is being brought to you in person and by Zoom and we're also broadcasting live on MITV Channel 21 and on the city's YouTube channel. Council members, please have your microphones turned off for roll calls. City Clerk Andrea Larson, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Androw?
Here.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Here.
Councilmember Wyker has not joined us yet. Councilmember Weinberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Here.
And Mayor Nees?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And City Clerk, can you please note that Jacobson and Androw are attending via Zoom? Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please turn off your video and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to approval of tonight's agenda. If there's no questions, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Androw?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Mayor Nees?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
And on note for the record, Councilmember Wyker arrived at 5:01. And Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion passes. Agenda is approved and we turn to the City Manager for the City Manager Report. Welcome, Jesse Bond.
Good evening, City Council. Let me, there we go. Happy Tuesday. All right, Casey's driving the slides for me. Let's go ahead to the next slide. Council, just look ahead as we come almost to the conclusion of 2024. Our next meeting is Tuesday, December 3rd. We are currently anticipating canceling our second meeting in December, but we'll ask you to make that decision at your December 3rd meeting. Looking ahead to the Boards and Commissions, the Design Commission is meeting tomorrow, or excuse me, Wednesday, December 4th. And then the Planning Commission is working on scheduling a brief special meeting to address a final motion on the docket, and I emailed you about that last night. Next slide, please. Well, some good news. The Luther Burbank Park pickleball courts are open with their asphalt surfacing. In fact, what you're seeing in that photo is the final lift of asphalt and what we're referring to as temporary court lines. The courts are playable with the asphalt surface, and then later this spring, when we get warmer temperatures, we will be coming back and putting the final surfacing down on the courts and the final lines. I've also mentioned previously, but I'll remind you again, we're planning an official opening ribbon cutting for the new courts this spring. We'll also be celebrating the completion of several other projects at Luther Burbank Park, including the boiler building renovation. Thank you to the community for their patience as we worked through some of the twists and turns with this project, and we hope you enjoy playing pickleball in the rain for a few months. All right, next slide, please. Council, just a quick update on the Island Crestway and Southeast 40th property repairs. Just remind you that in 2023, we completed landscaping and pedestrian improvements on the city-owned property that sits right at the corner there of Island Crestway and 40th. Over the course, after everything was planted, it was doing well, and then all the material began to die off despite watering and proper care by our teams. We also lost the big Douglas fir that was on the corner. We investigated the situation. We took soil samples and discovered that the property had been vandalized through the placement of not just one type of herbicide, but several types of herbicides, and we filed a police report. So that is a reminder of how we got to this project. We've brought our construction company back. We've been working with our insurance company. We removed the damaged landscaping and all of the contaminated soil. That's been happening over the last week or two. Next week, crews will be bringing in the new clean topsoil and starting to replant, so things are on their way to completion. We should have most of the project wrapped up by the end of December. Next slide, please. Update on the SCADA system, and I'm going to invite our Public Works team to come to you probably in quarter one or quarter two with a full sweeping update on this project since it's pretty significant and it spans the entirety of the island. But I'll just remind you, we are working on upgrading our sewer system with the supervisory control and data acquisition system. We call it SCADA, which provides more reliable monitoring of our sewer system. We're at about the 30% completion with upgrades successfully completed at the pump stations 12, 15, 16, 17, and 18. I don't have a map to show you where all of those are, but it's, work is happening. We have more work coming up this month, and then we'll time out the project through the end of December and pick it back up after the first part of January. Next slide, please. Also, just wanted to acknowledge that there is a lot of construction activity happening in town center. If you've been in town center, it's everywhere. We, last week, our crews poured concrete sidewalk along 80th Avenue. This is part of that major pedestrian improvement project happening on 80th Avenue Southeast. Weather permitting, we'll do some additional sidewalk grading and concrete work in the next couple of weeks. We are also continuing to work on all of the ADA ramp replacements on the corners. Recently, we just did Southeast 27th Street and the corner of 28th and 78th. So lots of work happening. We're trying to wrap a lot of it up before the holidays. Anything remaining, we'll pick back up after the first of the year. Next slide. Healthy Youth Initiative. I just wanted to give a shout out to the Youth and Family Services Team. They hosted a youth suicide prevention webinar last week for parents in our community. We had 25 participants, really well-intended, very positive feedback. If anyone missed it and would like more information, we post our presentations and additional resources and information on the Healthy Youth Initiative website, and we've linked it there at the bottom of the slide. Next slide, please. I also wanted to just highlight a really successful program as part of our emergency management campaign that we hosted last week. We facilitated here two Stop the Bleed classes at the community center. We had almost 50 community members come out and take that training where they learn to apply a tourniquet, pack a wound, apply pressure during life-threatening bleeding. We haven't done a lot of these classes. We've begun to phase them back, and they've been really well-attended, so thank you to our police chief, who is here sitting to my left, our emergency manager, Amanda Kaverkamp, and all of the emergency management volunteers that are working with us to produce these programs. More of these programs to come. Next slide, please. Council, we are headed into the holidays. I have a whole bunch of slides and dates to update you on. First of all, a reminder to our community that we offer a variety of programs to support families in need on Mercer Island during the holidays. We have gifts for kids, we have holiday meals, and we also are continuing to offer our financial assistance program. On this slide, you'll see the information to apply for these programs. Cheryl Manriquez is the contact. We also, via the YFS Foundation and our YFS Programs Coordinator, accept donations. Reminder that the HopeLink Mobile Market comes about every other week, and will be here in the community center parking lot on December 4th and December 20th. Next slide, please. All right, I'll run through these really quick, but I just wanted to make sure, Council, you were aware of all of the upcoming special events. December 5th, which is a Thursday this year, is our Holiday Tree Lighting at Mercerdale Park, so please come on out for that. Next slide. Following that, two days later, Saturday, December 7th, here at the community center from 10 to 3, we'll be hosting our Holiday Makers Market, which is a variety of artisans selling their unique handcrafted goods. Very exciting event, very well-attended. Next slide, please. Family Movie Night on December 13th, if you want to swing by and watch the Muppets' Christmas Carol. These always sell out. These are very, very popular events, so make sure you RSVP as soon as possible and absolutely no later than December 9th. Next slide, please. The Argosy Christmas Ships are back. They will be here at Luther Burbank Park on Sunday, December 15th at 7 o'clock. The ship will sail in at 7:40 PM. So hopefully, we get a dry, not very windy night for the Argosy ships to come back. Next slide. Also, the Friends of the Library reached out. They wanted me to make sure I shared with you that they are preparing for their annual book sale, which is beginning Thursday, December 5th, runs through Monday, December night. The funds raised from their book sales are used to sponsor a wide range of events and programs in partnership with the libraries, such as author appearances, children's storytimes, and more. The sale is held during the library hours, and you can get more information by emailing the address there on the screen or visiting the King County Library System. Thank you to the Friends of Library for doing that event. Next slide. All right, and the last slide is just some good news. I wanted to feature some work that the recreation team has been doing. We have been exploring the opportunity to switch our athletic field reservations to an online system, so basically a self-service portal. Doesn't always work when we have to book all of the leagues, but with any of the remaining field time, it's actually working out quite well. We piloted this over the last couple of months. We were able to bring in $10,000, which was our goal for the pilot. We booked 82 reservations, which was about 214 hours of field time, and we didn't have to do anything, except for we obviously were maintaining the fields. But our pilot is working, and we're planning to continue it. So if you or you know teams on our off-island that are looking for field time, our self-service portal is something we're going to continue with. And, Council, that is all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Our next item of business is appearances, which is an opportunity for anyone to speak to the Council on any item except items requiring a public hearing, judicial matters or campaign-related matters. I'll note that there's three public hearings on the agenda. If your comments pertain to the 2025-2026 budget, ordinance number 24C-17 regarding permit processing, and ordinance number 24C-18 regarding affordable housing capacity and requirements, I ask that you hold your comments until the appropriate public hearing. City Clerk, do we have anyone for public comment tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Tonight's agenda will include in-person public appearances and remote public appearances via Zoom. Individuals wishing to address the Council may do so in person or by Zoom or telephone, provided they're registered with the City Clerk by 4:00 PM today. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be called by name. Remarks must be addressed to the Council as a whole and not to individual Council or staff members. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks who becomes boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the City Council may be requested to leave the meeting. Please speak audibly, state your name and city of residence for the record. There'll be a timer on the screen, and you'll have three minutes to speak. When your time's ended, I'll thank you for your comments and move to the next speaker. City Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker tonight is Kim Florence.
Hi, my name is Kim Florence. I am a citizen of Mercer Island, a mom to three kids, and a member of the Mercer Island PTA Council Advocacy Committee. When my family first moved to the island 14 months ago, I was delighted to see the island kids zipping around to school and friends' homes on motorized scooters. I thought it was an ingenious idea, allowing greater independence for the kids and giving the parents a much-needed break from running their children around everywhere. However, over the last 14 months, I have seen an increase in worrying and potentially dangerous behavior on both e-scooters and especially e-bikes. I have the dubious honor of doing three-school drop-offs nearly every day, so I get to witness a lot of student behavior at various ages throughout the island. What I have observed is many kids riding their e-mobility devices, meaning e-scooters or e-bikes, in an appropriate and safe manner. I have also observed many kids riding their e-mobility devices in an unsafe and even illegal manner. Observe behaviors and collude: riding without helmets, riding with more than one passenger, cutting off cars to make left-handed turns, riding above the speed limit, riding e-bikes of a classification that requires a license, riding e-bikes that require a license while not wearing a helmet, riding without reflective clothing after dark, riding e-bikes too fast on sidewalks, riding e-scooters too fast in the middle of rush hour traffic. The list could go on and on. I personally very nearly hit a child who was riding an e-scooter in the dark without reflective gear on the wrong side of the road. Someone is going to get hurt. Parents of Mercer Island would like the City Council to take action. Current state regulations are insufficient to adequately protect our student e-mobility riders. State regulations allow local municipalities to enact more rigorous ordinances as they see fit. The MIPTA Council, of which I am an advocacy committee member, has recently passed a resolution asking the Mercer Island City Council to act in a timely manner to introduce and enforce common sense ordinances to ensure student safety while using e-mobility devices. I will read it to you now. E-mobility device safety for Mercer Island students. Adopted November 2024 by the Mercer Island PTA Council Board of Directors. Whereas Washington State PTA advocates to ensure all children and youth have safe routes to and from school, whereas we recognize the potential benefits of students using e-mobility devices, including increased student mobility and independence, as well as decreased traffic congestion and carbon emissions. Whereas we are seeing an increase in the number of students on Mercer Island using e-mobility devices, whereas medical professions are stated to recognize a severe risk posed to our children by unsafe use of e-mobility devices. Whereas our city and PTAs are hearing grave concerns from parents and caregivers about the unsafe use of e-mobility devices by students. And whereas we do not have detailed regulation from the state legislator, therefore, be it resolved that the Mercer Island PTA Council requests the city, without delay, create a clear and actionable guidance for our community on the types of e-mobility devices currently available, the laws regarding their use, who can legally-
Okay, thank you. You can leave a copy of that with the City Clerk, which we appreciate. Is there any other public comment?
There are no further speakers for appearances, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Seeing no other further appearances for appearances, move to our next item, which is the Consent Agenda, which contains AB 6572, November 1, 2024 payroll certification, certification of claims for November 1 and 8, 2024, and certification of electronic fund transfers for September and October 2024. City Council Special Hybrid Meeting Minutes of November 4, 2024. AB 6573, second reading of ordinance number 24C-16 related to the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. AB 6566, Sound Transit Right-Away Dedication, and AB 6568, Accessory Structure Agreement, 3072, 71st Avenue Southeast. Council may have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Mayor Nees?
Aye.
Councilmember Androw?
Aye.
And Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Our first item of regular business is AB 6571, the public hearing on the 2025-2026 Biennial Budget. This public hearing is now open as of 5:18 PM. Individuals who register with the City Clerk's office before 4:00 PM today may make public comment on this agenda item. You'll be called by name when it's your turn to speak. Please speak audibly, state your name and city of residence for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. City Clerk, is there anyone signed up for the public comment that wishes to address the Council?
There was no one who registered to speak for the budget public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Seeing as there's no further testimony this evening, the public portion of this hearing is closed as of 5:18 PM. Council will be back later in the agenda to deal with, address this regular item of business. Our next item of regular business is AB 6575, Public Hearing on Interim Regulations Related to Permit Processing in Chapters 19.15 and 19.16, MICC, and Ordinance Number 24C-17. This public hearing is now open as of 5:19 PM. Individuals who register with the City Clerk before 4:00 PM today may make public comment on this agenda item. You'll be called by name when it's your turn to speak. Please speak audibly, state your name and city of residence for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. City Clerk, is there anyone for public comment tonight?
There was no one who signed up to speak during this public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, as there's no further public testimony this evening, the public portion of this hearing is closed as of 5:19 PM. Council will be back later in regular business to deal with this item. Our next item of regular business is AB 6576, Public Hearing for Ordinance Number 24C-18 on Interim Regulations Related to the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update and House Bill 1220 for Affordable Housing Capacity Requirements and Title 19, MICC. The public hearing is now open as of 5:19 PM. Individuals who register with the City Clerk before 4:00 PM today may make public comment on this agenda item. You'll be called by name when it's your turn to speak. Please speak audibly, state your name and city of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. City Clerk, is there anyone signed up for public comment that wishes to address the Council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, please call the first speaker.
The first speaker is Tenley Tobin.
Welcome.
Thank you. Tenley Tobin, and my address is 19612, Northeast 125th Court, Woodenville, Washington, 98077. I'd like to address the City Council tonight in regards to the revisions to the 2024 Comprehensive Plan. Specifically, there were two plans that were put forth, Plan A and Plan B, and I just want to reiterate that I'm a property owner of the Alandia Center, which is where the Island Books is located. And this property's been in my family for generations, and the building was built in 1964, and it is obviously an older building, and we have kept it up. However, it is 60 years old, and the Comprehensive Plan is now making decisions based on building heights that could affect the profitability of, or the feasibility of redevelopment. My family is not planning on redeveloping this property at this time or the near future, but the Comprehensive Plan is for 20 years, and so whatever decisions you make on this affects the future up to 20 years. And you have presented a plan, which is Plan B, which allows two extra stories for Zone 4 and 5, and nothing for Zone 3, which is where our property is located. And there was another plan, which was Plan A, which allowed for one additional story for the entire town center, which seemed a lot more fair and equitable. I know I've, this is something that's just come up to my attention yesterday, but I have read that your goals are to have a tiered effect and a sloping effect, and not to create canyons, but when you allow seven stories to go down to one story, because our property will never be developed if we continue just to have a two plus one. So now you're going to have these high buildings down to one. That, to me, is not a tiered effect. Plus, you're going to create canyons, and I worry that this is, is this really what the community wants? Because I've heard that people do not want that canyon effect, and I think your proposal on Plan B is exactly that. And so I question, why are you doing that? And, because I can tell you, our property, which, as I said, is not going to be developed now, but someday it probably will, I don't know when, and you're eliminating that possibility for 20 years for us. So I'm proposing that we either are-
Thank you for your comments.
Add a skin to the other.
Thank you. Is there any other further public comment?
Can you give me just two more seconds?
If you have any written comments, you can leave them with the City Clerk. It's three minutes.
Okay, but you are deciding tonight.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Colin Scone.
I live in northeast Seattle, have lived in the Seattle area all my life. I'm a local retail and housing developer. I have several close family members that live on the island and have lived there for some upwards of 40 years. We've been noticing that you guys have a comprehensive plan that allows for additional density in the town center, which we agree with. The city is looking to add additional density to facilitate development. However, we are seeing that the density bonus increases the affordability requirements from 10% at 60% AMI to 15% at 50% AMI, neither of which has a tax exception, which looks like it was voted down several years ago. We're thinking that this will make it extremely hard for development on existing property without market rents rising dramatically, and over the last couple of years, that hasn't been happening, so we're seeing that this will lead to lack of further development in the town center rather than further density as you guys are looking for. This also has decreased land values up to 25%, depending on size, just by doing quick studies and doing the math on the actual rent studies. To achieve further density near the light rail station, town center, with corresponding appropriate retail square footage, perhaps a reasonable fee in lieu of providing the housing on site, such as what's happening in Seattle with MHA, would spur further density. The fee could be paid to ARPS for the affordable housing, either elsewhere or as a potential standalone product on the island. This will technically comply under affordable housing obligations, and it'll give money to ARPS, which can actually create affordable housing in a market that a developer may not create. We're more than happy to reach out to you guys and figure out how we came to these conclusions if you guys are interested, and that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, is there any other public comment?
There are no further speakers this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, as there's no further testimony this evening, the public portion of this hearing is closed as of 5:26 PM. Council will circle back on this item later in the agenda. Our next item of regular business is AB 6574, Sound Cities Association Voting Delegates for the Annual Meeting and North Caucus Meeting. Council, we need to select voting delegates to attend the SCA Annual Meeting on December 4, 2024, and the North Caucus Meeting on December 13, 2024. Thank you, Councilmember Wyker and Councilmember Weinberg for volunteering. Council, is there a motion to appoint Councilmembers Weinberg as the voting delegate at the SCA Annual Meeting on December 4, 2024, and the Councilmember Wyker as the voting delegate in the North Caucus Meeting on December 13, 2024?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Mayor Nees?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
And Councilmember Androw?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion passes. Our next item of regular business is AB 6571, Discussion on the 2025-2026 Biennial Budget Workshop, Third Quarter 2024 Financial Status Update, Adoption of Budget Resolutions and Ordinances, and we welcome Finance Director Matt Moritz.
Good evening, Mayor Nees, members of the Council, City Manager Bond. I'm Matt Moritz, your Finance Director, and welcome to the second and final public hearing for the 2025-2026 Biennial Budget Review Process. Ben Schumacher, our financial analyst, is joining us remotely tonight, and he is going to steer our slide deck. Next slide, please. Okay, I'm going to work through 20 slides this evening, starting with an overview of the city's financials through September 30th. I'll also pause for questions after we get through the financial status update. Then we'll transition to reviewing the feedback that the city staff has received from the City Council over the, this past fall, related to the biennial budget. And then we'll transition to the remaining components of the budget that we're looking to work with Council this evening to finalize and work towards adoption. Those include setting the property tax increases for fiscal year 2025, council reviewing and approving the city's budget for regional dispatch services. We're also presenting for Council's consideration tonight, aligning the city's ambulance transports fees with our current service provider's fees, which is Eastside Fire and Rescue. And then we're, have a handful of non-substantive changes to the city's financial management policies for Council's consideration. I'm joined by Fire Chief Ben Lane, the city's leadership team- I'm joined by Fire Chief Ben Lane, the city's leadership team, and the city's finance team, which we're happy to answer your questions along the way. Next slide. This is the very little remaining schedule that we have left for the review and eventual adoption of the 2025-2026 Biennial Budget. We've covered a lot of ground. We released the preliminary budget on September 25. Council has provided us input over the three budget workshops, and we're going to go over shortly the input that we've received to fine-tune the biennial budget. Our goal tonight is just to put the remaining four components that I just mentioned in front of the council, so that we can aim towards incorporating that into the budget for a potential adoption at the first meeting in December. Next slide, please. Okay, we'll begin with the financial status update. So this table is a summary of revenues and expenditures for the city's general fund and the city's three utility funds, the Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Fund. From left to right, we have, the first column is actuals, budget actuals for revenues and expenditures for those four funds from January through the end of September of fiscal year 2023, as well as the 2024 amended budget. And those two columns are there for comparison relative to the third column, which are budget actuals from, through September 30 of this year. The final column compares budget actuals for 2024 relative to the amended budget. And so from January through September of this year, funds are performing as expected. When you compare budget actuals this year relative to 2023, council will note that revenues are slightly down in the general fund and expenditures are up. And I'm going to go into this shortly. The utility funds are within budget expectations. Revenues are tracking where they need to be, and they are up relative to 2023 due to rate increases for the city's utility rates that went into effect January 1 of this year, as well as a higher level of interest earnings than we anticipated across all the city's funds, including the utility funds. Utility fund expenditures are tracking with budget expectations. If you look at the bottom row, far right corner, you'll notice that the budget actuals relative to the amended budget is somewhat low, at 37%. And there's reason for that. And when we adopted the 2023-2024 Biennial Budget, staff assumed that we would go out and issue debt in the fall of 2023 to support the significant capital work underway for the city's water utility. As the council is well aware, we did a cash flow analysis, and we're able to delay that debt issuance 12 months. We just sold limited tax general obligation bonds this past October. And so there was no principal and interest payments that were incurred over this past year, so that explains in part why expenditures are low through September of this year. But there is significant work underway in the capital program. If you compare the budget actuals this year relative to 2023, you'll notice that there's about a $4 million increase in expenditures. If you just take, for example, the water utility, from January through September, end of September of this year, we've spent $3.7 million more than we did in the prior year. Next slide. As I mentioned earlier, general fund revenues are down, and that's solely due to the change from accrual-based GAAP accounting to cash basis accounting as defined by the State Auditor's Office. This change went into effect in January of this year, and it only affects the timing of revenues. It doesn't actually affect the amount of revenue that the city brings in. So if you set January aside, from February through September, the city's general, primary revenue streams in the general fund are healthy. Sales tax is tracking with the revenue levels that we experienced in 2023, and as the council is aware, that was a historic level of revenue. Permit revenues are also performing well. Through the end of September, we can tie $1 million specifically to the re-permitting work for a mixed-use project in the town center. And as I mentioned earlier, interest earnings through the third quarter in the general fund amount to 1.8 million, which is $100,000 more than 2023, and 2023 was a record year for the city in interest earnings. That's primarily due to two reasons. First, the city's average 30-day yield on our investments from January through September has averaged 5.38% in the local government investment pool. And second, earlier in the year, the city's contingency fund meet, met its target funding threshold. And so all of the interest earnings on the principal related to the contingency fund has remained in the general fund per the city's financial management policies. Next slide. At the end of the third quarter, we aim to see, we like to see expenditures tracking at about 75% of budget, which makes sense, given that we're three-quarters of the way through the year, at the end of September. General fund expenditures are at 72%. If you look at the very bottom row, far right corner of this table, and so they are tracking within budget expectations. I will note that the expenditures in 2024 relative to 2023 are higher in the general fund by an amount of $4.7 million compared to 2023. And that's due to a handful of factors, but mainly, the City Council has very diligently set aside $3.4 million in one-time savings in the general fund into the municipal facility replacement fund, a fund that is essentially set aside, established to set aside resources to address the long-term facility needs with the closure of City Hall. The first of three payments from the city to Eastside Fire and Rescue for one-time transition costs associated with this new partnership has also gone out this year. It's about $400,000. So that is also a one-time cost that is worth noting. And finally, employee compensation costs have increased. At the beginning of 2024, we saw a 6.5% increase in a cost-of-living adjustment per the city's collective bargaining agreements. And as the council is aware, in June of this year, the council passed a classification and compensation plan, a whole new framework for compensating non-rep, unrepresented employees in the organization. And so that plan went into effect on July 1. So we are tracking employee compensation costs much higher in '24 relative to '23. I just want to make a note that in the agenda bill, we referenced that the one-time transition cost, $1.24 million, that the city agreed to with Eastside Fire and Rescue when we transitioned to this regional partnership. We explained in the agenda bill that those payments were going to, three payments were going to go out before the end of this year, and that was incorrect. I just want to set, state on the record, per the agreement with Eastside, we've established the payment plan that four, three payments are going to go out. The first one out in 2024, and the remaining two payments will go out, one in 2025, and then the final third payment in 2026. Next slide. Are there any questions on the financial status update?
Council, any questions? No, we're not seeing any. Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide. Next few slides are just to briefly summarize the feedback that the staff team has received from council regarding the preliminary budget. Next slide. Excuse me. When the preliminary budget was published at the end of September, it was very much a working document. And so over three meetings, the City Council has asked questions, has weighed in, and has adjusted the two-year budget. This slide highlights some of the changes that have been made over those workshops, which include policies to reduce retail crime in collaborations with partners in the region. The council has also invested $500,000 of one-time resources on a handful of initiatives, one being the development of a fee-in lieu program and accelerating work on that to fund affordable housing both on the island and within the region. Staff is also going to draft the first phase of an electric vehicle infrastructure plan on the island, leveraging outside funding. Just a second. Thank you, Ally. Leveraging outside funding with resources that the council has also set aside. And we're also going to work to improve digital accessibility for Americans with disabilities related to the information that the city posts on the city web and our media outlets as well. Council funded two limited-term positions to help address the significant work underway to improve the water distribution system. That was a very strategic use of those resources, and I would be remiss if I did not mention that council members read the Biennial Budget from cover to cover. We very much appreciated the effort that the council team put into this work, and council members identified minor errors along the way. And so, thank you from the staff team. We're going to address those errors and make sure that we tighten up the final budget that we present to the council at the first meeting in December. Next slide. So overall, the feedback from the City Council improved the Biennial Budget and really provided the staff team with the resources that we need to see through significant work over the next two years. Next slide. The final section of our slide deck is to review the remaining component, components of the Biennial Budget, starting with property tax. Every November, property tax ordinances are presented to the council for your consideration, your review and adoption. By way of background, cities can increase their property taxes by 1% each year or by the implicit price deflator, whichever is lower. And so the maximum threshold that we can increase property taxes in 2025 is 1%. State law requires that all cities in King County must submit their 2025 property tax levy estimates to the assessor's office before November 30. And so this table shows the 1% increase as estimated for 2025 relative to 2024 for both the regular levy and the 2022 parks levy. That was re-approved in November 2022. Next slide. Similarly, the Regional Public Safety Emergency Dispatch Provider, NORCOM, adopts their annual budget in December, and all partner cities must affirm their 2025 contribution levels before the end of November. And so the city's budget allocation for NORCOM in 2025 is just under $698,000. This is already built into the preliminary budget. And the council may note that this is a notable increase relative to what our contribution was in 2024, and that's for a handful of reasons. First, there was no increase between 2023 to 2024, so this essentially is a two-year rate increase. Also, NORCOM has signaled to their, to their partner agencies that they brought on two new positions and that they're planning long-range strategic planning work in 2025. Next slide. An additional component for council's consideration tonight is to update the ambulance transport fees that are charged on Mercer Island, so that they align with the fees that are charged by our service provider, Eastside Fire and Rescue. Council last updated our policies and our fees in 2021 based on a regional market assessment and in collaboration with the Eastside Fire and Rescue leadership, who was serving as, in an interim role at that time. And we really intended to improve the administration of these fees and to just make sure that we were recouping the costs for these services. And so the council established a financial forgiveness program. We put measures in place to ensure that we were equitably enforcing the program, and we tied the fees to an annual escalator, medical care CPI, all of which has been determined to be standard practices within the industry. Next slide. Eastside began providing emergency medical transport services on Mercer Island in January 2024. And although Eastside provides the service, council has the discretion over the fees that are charged for transports originating on Mercer Island. And so we have recognized through this year, and given this is the first year of our partnership, that having two sets of fees complicates the tracking and the charging for these services, and it lacks consistency and continuity in the service delivery. And so Resolution 1666 looks to align Mercer Island's fees with Eastside's fees for fiscal year 2025, which would result in a base fee of $1,323 for a transport and a per-mileage fee of $24.46. The intent here is to recover costs from Medicaid, Medicare, and private insurers. This adoption of Resolution 1666 does not in any way affect the financial forgiveness program. That will remain in place. Next slide, please. Final, final component here before the council this evening is to update the city's financial management policies. This is a living document that we strive to update when there's changes to the city's financials over time. And so these are non-substantive changes. We're just looking to include the two additional new funds that have been established per council direction. The, as I mentioned earlier, municipal facility replacement reserve and a new special revenue fund that will go into effect January next year for the Community Planning and Development Department, the Development Services Fund. And finally, there are a handful of references in the financial management policies to the city's chart of accounts. With the transition in January of next year to new financial management software, the city is also implementing a brand-new, fantastic new chart of accounts. We're very excited about this. So that also includes some of the revisions to the financial management policies. Next slide, please. Once we incorporate the feedback that we received from the City Council this evening, we will return at the first meeting in December for council to consider adoption of the 2025-2026 Biennial Budget and the 2025 Master Fee Schedule. Next slide. These are the five recommendations from the agenda bill this evening for council's consideration. We can return to this slide if, for reference as required. With that, we will go ahead and stop sharing the slide deck and open it up for questions. Thank you, Ben.
Okay, thank you. And first, let me just start by thanking you and the staff for your work on this. It's been a huge lift, and we appreciate the efficiency in which you've moved through it, and also the support of the rest of the staff teams that come together to produce a Biennial Budget. Jake Jacobson, Councilmember Jacobson, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, I got to see if I'm on mute or not.
No, you're good.
Okay. My question relates to Slide 14. And while you're recycling back to that, I share the mayor's commendation for the work that's taken place to get this budget together. So can you bring up Slide 14, please?
Sure, they're working on that, Councilmember. Is that the slide you're looking for?
Yeah. My question is, what is the basis for the determination of Mercer Island's share of NORCOM fees? Is it population-based? Is it based on something else?
I invite our Deputy Finance Director, LaWan Tuttle, to weigh in, but the way I've come to understand it is it's predominantly based on the number of calls and a historical aggregate of the number of calls for each jurisdiction that informs the fees for the upcoming year.
Okay, is that person going to come on, or is that, you're going to get back to me on that?
LaWan Tuttle, you're Deputy Finance Director. I can just confirm what Matt said. The NORCOM rates are distributed based on a rate model that NORCOM has devised, and it's primarily based on calls for service by each jurisdiction. So that's our share based on police calls or dispatches through NORCOM.
Okay.
Excellent. Any other questions?
I have another question, Mayor, when it's my turn again.
Okay, nobody else is on deck, so go ahead.
With respect to Development Services Fund, is that, would you please describe how that, how that gets funded and what it's for, please?
Sure. I'm just going to reference my notes specifically on that fund. I'm just gonna reference my notes specifically on that fund. So, the Development Services Fund is a special revenue fund where we are tracking all of the revenues and expenditures associated with the Community Planning and Development Department's operations. So, the revenues that are coming in to the Development Service Fund are entirely tied to permit-related work. The expenditures associated with that fund include permit-related work as well as the additional services that are non-permit-related provided by Community Planning and Development, for example, long-range planning. And so, we anticipate in 2025, for example, that there is going to be a total of $4.2 million in operations in the Development Services Fund. 2.8 million associated with permit fees, about 500,000 that's associated with land use fees, and then the, the balance of that, which is about $900,000, is non-permit-related work that will be covered by a subsidy from the general fund. So, the, this is, aligns with the, the previous practice that we've had in place with, within the city's financial operations. All of the revenues and expenditures that were associated with Community Planning and Development were previously nested in the general fund. We're pulling those out and separating them into this, this new fund. It's just gonna allow for cleaner accounting. It's gonna allow for the development of an operating reserve that will help bolster the CPD department's operations when there's economic downturns, and it'll allow us to more cleanly track the general fund subsidy, the amount of money that the general fund is committing to non-permit-related services each biennial.
Thank you.
Okay, council, any other just questions? Not seeing any. Council, is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 24-19 appropriating funds and establishing the amount of property tax to be levied for fiscal year 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. Council, any discussion? Okay, city clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson? Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Neese?
Aye.
And Councilmember Androl?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion passes. Next, is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 24-20 establishing the dollar amount and percentage increases for the regular property tax levy and the levy lid lifts for fiscal year 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. Council, any discussion? Not seeing any. City clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Abstain.
Councilmember Androl?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
And Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Motion passes. The next motion is adoption of Resolution number 1665 approving NORCOM's 2025 budget allocation to the city of Mercer Island. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. Any discussion? City clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Androl?
Aye.
And Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Motion passes. Council, is there a motion to adopt Resolution number 1666 updating the city's ambulance transport fees to align with Eastside Fire and Rescue's ambulance transport fees for fiscal year 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. Any discussion? City clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Androl?
Aye.
Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
And Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Motion passes. Lastly, is there a motion to adopt Resolution number 1667 updating the city's financial management policies to incorporate policy or administrative decisions from the previous year?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. Any discussion? Not seeing any. City clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Androl?
Aye.
Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, and the motion passes. Our next item of regular business, AB 6575, discussion of interim regulations.
Excuse me, Mayor, I have a, I have a, my hands raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Jacobson.
Yes, I'd like to change my vote on ordinance 24-19 from abstain to aye.
2419.
Yes.
So noted.
Okay, city clerk has noted that change. Anything else, Councilmember Jacobson?
Not, not right now.
Okay. Our next item of regular business is AB 6575, discussion interim regulations related to permit processing on chapters 19.15 and 19.16, MICC ordinance number 24C-17, and we welcome CPD Director Jeff Thomas. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. For the record, Jeff Thomas with Planning. Joining me here on video is Senior Planner Molly McGuire, and I will note, we do have a couple other staff in attendance here tonight that may be called upon to help answer any questions that you may have as this was, this effort that we're about to run through with you here was truly a group effort in the department with most of our planners and permit center staff contributing to not only getting the interim regulations pulled together for your consideration here this evening, but also the implementation that's going to be following with the, the practical rollout of what's in these regulations and how it will interact with customers moving forward. With that, before I turn it over to Molly, she has 16 or 17 slides. I'll ask for your patience here as Molly works through the material. We have not had the benefit of having a study session or discussion with you here in the last number of weeks leading up to this evening, but the good news is, is that council did pass actually a large portion of these interim regulations already back in July 2023, and then the final piece of the puzzle with Senate Bill 5290, implementing the state legislation and being in compliance with it, is Section 7, which needs to be, we need to, we, like all other jurisdictions, need be in compliance by the end of this year. So, essentially, in a nutshell, what we're doing here this evening is we're bringing to you a package of interim regulations that will rule the existing Senate Bill 5290 interim regulations, again, originally adopted by council in July 2023, together with the final piece of the puzzle, which is compliance with Section 7 of that bill. So then, we will have one complete package of interim regulations, so the city will be in compliance with SB 5290 prior to the final deadline here at the end of the year. And with that, I've probably talked through Molly's first three slides, but I'll turn it over to Molly, and I'll ask her to maybe just quickly run through that again in case it didn't make complete sense to me. I'm sure Molly will make complete sense. So, Molly, take it away. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, yeah. And so, as Jeff said, the purpose of this presentation is to hold the first reading of ordinance number 24C17 to amend sections of the code to comply with Senate Bill 5290 and adopt the work plan for establishing permanent regulations. So, as Jeff said, you've already seen portions of the amendments back in July of 2023 when interim regulations were enacted to amend the code to comply with the portions of 5290 that went into effect in July of 2023. So, we need to further amend the code to comply with Section 7 that goes into effect on January 1st. As a quick refresher, ordinance number 23C-10 included amendments to comply with three sections of 5290 that were effective in July of 2023. None of these previously adopted, adopted interim regulations have changed in this new ordinance. So, Section 1 resulted in amendments to exempt interior alterations from site plan review and to add a definition of interior alteration to our definition section. Section 5 amended the RCW definition of project permit application, which I'll touch on a little bit more. And Section 6 resulted in amendments for clarifications to the determination of completeness criteria. So again, none of these amendments have changed, and they're just all rolled into this new And so, like I said, the RCW definition of project permit applications has changed slightly. This definition is important because it determines what types of review are subject to the determination of completeness standards and the new maximum review timelines, which we'll talk about in a couple slides. You may notice that building permits were removed from this definition of project permit, but in the proposed amendments to the code, building permits are subject to the determination of completeness and maximum review timeline standards. So, we did this based on guidance from the Department of Commerce as well as legal counsel to take a more broad approach to which permit types are subject to these requirements until further clarification is provided. So, going forward, building permits are considered to be project permit applications. So now, we'll get into the new interim regulations, which are necessary for the city to comply with Section 7 of 5290, again, effective on January 1st, 2025. So, the most substantial change to the land use review type section is the reformatting of the tables for review types and review processing procedures into four separate tables broken up by type. These new tables outline the review process for each specific application type and reflect the determination of completeness and review timelines required for project permit based on the definitions that we discussed earlier. And also included in the, these amendments to this section is the removal of the existing footnotes and integration of these footnotes into the table where applicable, and then removal of the term "single family" from non-major and major single-family building permit applications since these review procedures apply to all building permits.
Molly, can I interrupt you for a quick question from Councilmember Jacobson?
Yeah.
Actually, let me hold on. I'm not sure I want to ask it. Please let her finish.
Okay.
So maybe provide what she is saying.
So, the review procedure section was amended to establish the maximum review timelines for each permit type with type 1 and 2 permits allowing 65 days for review, type 3, 100 days, and type 4, 170 days. These timelines are the default timelines outlined in Section 7 of 5290. And then, this section also exempts nine of our 47 permit types, which we found do not meet the definition of project permit application. So, the applications listed on the side over here are not subject to the determination of completeness or review timeline requirements. The review procedures were also amended to establish the penalty for exceeding the maximum review timelines, which depend on the amount of time exceeded, summarized in the table there. A discussion of streamlining options was included in the agenda bill. To quickly summarize here, if the city were to implement three out of the 10 options, it would be exempt from this penalty and would need to refund or discount permit fees in the review, if the review timeline was exceeded. So, an analysis of these options is included in the work plan for developing permanent regulations. So, it's something that staff will look into to determine if any of the options are feasible for implementation. The application requirements were amended to convert the list of minimum requirements for a complete submittal into a table which outlines the middle requirements by permit type, and it also includes a few additional submittal requirements, like the project narrative and co-compliance matrix shown in the image on the right. And you can find the, that whole table in the ordinance. And the determination of completeness requirements were amended to establish procedures for if an applicant is non-responsive for more than 60 days. It also establishes what non-responsive means and where the city, so this is where the city may add an additional 30 days to the maximum review timelines if an applicant is non-responsive for more than 60 days. And lastly, the definition section was amended to, again, remove the term "single family" from the definition of major single-family dwelling building permit for consistency with the land use review applications. So, here we have the work plan, which includes technical analysis, planning commission review, and city council review and approval. And finally, the next steps to include the second reading, to schedule the second reading for December 3rd and develop permanent regulations. So, that's the end of the presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that. Council, are there any questions? All right, I'm not seeing any. Council, is there a motion to schedule ordinance number 24C-17 for second reading and adoption on December 3, 2024?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved by Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any. City clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Androl?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
And Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Our next item of regular business is AB 6576, discussion, first reading of ordinance number 24C-18 on interim regulations related to the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update and House Bill 1220 for Affordable Housing Capacity Requirements entitled 19 MICC. And we welcome back CPD Director Jeff Thomas.
Thank you again, Mayor. Joining me for this item is Senior Planner Adam Zach, who just popped onto the screen. Adam has a short, six-slide presentation, I believe, that he's gonna walk through in just a moment. Before he does that, I would like to know a couple of things and also just provide brief responses to the public comments that you received a short time ago for the public hearing. Council did have a study session on this subject on October 1st, about six weeks ago now, and did provide direction to staff, which is, in essence, the ordinance that's been brought back for your consideration here this evening that was subject to the public hearing a few minutes ago. The two public commentators, I would just like to note, the first public commenter was referring to Plan A or Plan B. I'm not exactly sure what the language was, but it, her comments did refer specifically to Option A and Option B that were presented to the council on October 1st. And after consideration and discussion of those options, staff was directed to proceed with developing an ordinance that would bring Option B forward. So, that was the first public commenter. The second public commenter did reference a possible development of a fee in lieu of option. That is exactly what we're going to be doing, and council asked us to, I believe it was at the last council meeting, there was a motion where during your budget deliberations for the city to work on the fee in lieu of option moving forward here in 2025. So, we will be working on that, in fact, as part of the CPD work program next year, and I believe we'll be coming back to council around the end of the first quarter of 2025 to report on our progress and hopefully give council some information for further direction, to receive further direction from you. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Adam here, and he's gonna take just a few minutes to run through the slides, and then it'll be back over to the council.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Just got my screen shared here. So, I just wanted to start and run through some background really quick here. So, a, as you'll remember, this, this issue first came about when the, the Washington State Legislature enacted House Bill 1220 in 2021, and that bill requires cities and counties to plan for housing to accommodate its forecasted households in all income segments, which was a, a change to the GMA requirements for how we, how we need to plan for housing. During the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review, the city conducted re, some analysis based on guidance from the Department of Commerce, and in that, in that analysis, we identified a need for 143 additional, or sorry, a need for capacity for 143 additional multifamily and mixed-use housing developments. That policy, policy direction regarding that capacity change was included in the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review, the updated housing element that was adopted. The updated housing element that was adopted earlier tonight included that policy direction. From there, that brought us to October 1st of this year, when we presented some different options for the council to consider for making those code amendments to achieve that or to implement that policy direction in the Comprehensive Plan. So on October 1st, you reviewed those options and provided staff with direction to come back with an ordinance that achieved, with an interim ordinance, rather, to achieve three specific things: increase the maximum building height in the TC5, TC4, and TC4+ subareas of Town Center; increase the required percentage of affordable housing in new development in Town Center; and then also deepen the affordability requirement for those affordable housing units. We'll look at how the ordinance does those three things here in the next few slides. To start with, the increase in building height that was directed, this is the map on the screen here on the right is the north end of Town Center. The area outlined in purple currently allows for five stories maximum building height. The ordinance would increase that from five stories to seven stories. And then the area outlined in orange on the map currently allows for a maximum building height of four stories. The proposed ordinance would increase that to five stories maximum. And with that, some of the subareas will be renamed, though the boundaries on the map won't be changing. And so TC5 would become TC7 to reflect the maximum seven stories. TC4 would become TC5 to reflect the maximum building height of five stories. And then TC4+ would become TC5+. Again, that maximum building height, though, is seven stories. That's how the height portion of 24C-18 would work. The next piece of the ordinance is adjusting the affordability requirements. So under the existing code in the Town Center, new development in any building taller than two stories must include 10% of the affordable units... sorry, 10% of the housing units as affordable housing units. And within those affordable housing units, they need to be affordable to households earning 60% of the area median income for rental housing and 90% of the area median income for owner-occupied housing. Under the proposed regulations in 24C-18, new development taller than two stories would be required to have 15% of its housing units be affordable housing. And in those affordable units, they would need to be affordable at 50% of the AMI for rental housing and 80% of the AMI for owner-occupied housing. Looking ahead at the next steps for this, tonight we concluded the public hearing, and this is the first reading of the ordinance. And we're asking you to set a second reading of the ordinance for December 3rd. And then, as a reminder, these are interim regulations. And so the second half of this will be developing permanent regulations to replace these interim regulations. And a project to develop those permanent regulations will be added to our CPD work plan following adoption of the ordinance. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those now.
Okay, thank you for that. Counsel, any questions? Not seeing any questions. Councilmember Weinberg.
So we heard some concern raised at the appearances regarding the likely development outcomes of choosing Option B over Option A. And Option B was something that I believe, if I'm reading the minutes correctly, from October 1st, that we passed unanimously. I believe the motion was originally made by Mayor Neese. I was wondering if you'd like to share what some of the reasoning was for choosing Option B over Option A and what some of the trade-offs were to respond to the concerns raised.
Sure. So, you know, the issue with Town Center is that we're not allowed to take a subarea and just pick the winners and the losers. So if there's a change in height between TC3, and TC3 is quite a large subarea of Town Center, it has to be applied equally within that subarea. The density requirements that we were looking for were hopefully closest to rail and mass transit, which favored the subareas in TC North. There was also development performance that were looked at on properties that penciled out with the affordable housing requirements. There were maybe a greater density and greater marketability in the north side of Town Center. So we looked at, how do we create the capacity that is required by House Bill 1220 in a way that it was reasonable to create the affordable housing units that Mercer Island has been tasked with developing over the next 20 years? And then the council had a discussion about looking at a corridor along 80th Avenue, which would include a portion of subarea TC3, the upzone to increase some density, again, closer to rail and walkable to jobs. And so while there was some public comment about how this may or may not affect development patterns and practices over the next 20 years and lock-in decisions, I have no doubt that in the five-year GNPC check-in, as we look at the strategies and accommodations that have been put in place to develop the required units in House Bill 1220, that certainly is not the case and that the council is going to be consistently looking at this, beginning with TC3 subarea on the 80th corridor between 28th and 29th, I think. So I hope that addresses that.
Yeah, so it sounds like, it's not like we don't get to look at this again for 20 years. There's a chance to look at it every year in the annual docket if we want to, or there's also a review at five years when we have kind of an assessment of how it's going. Is that right?
That's right. And, you know, we expect ST 2 line to start running, hopefully in 2025. There's some ambiguity about the westbound route when that would come into service, but eastbound at least. So as we look at light rail coming online and, you know, ridership increasing and looking at development patterns and practices around that, I think we'd be hopeful that we'd be looking at this quite often.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Just a quick question for the city manager, and I need a reminder on this. Obviously, the comments we got tonight were fairly late in the process, after we've been talking about this for quite a while. And this made me wonder, what was our public communication process about the potential comp plan changes, in particular as they went to non-resident owners of island property?
Hi, Jeff, could you take that question for me, please?
Yeah. Councilmember Reynolds, we outlined a public participation plan back at the original scope of the Comprehensive Plan update in 2022. For the council, we'd be happy to refurbish the council with a copy of that on the heels of this meeting, so you can see that again. The... in regards to this particular ordinance that's before you tonight, we began the conversation about this back in September, when the council went through and was contemplating some amendments to... the council portion of this discussion started in September, when you were contemplating some amendments to the draft Comprehensive Plan that was delivered by the Planning Commission to you with their recommendation. And then that segued into the October 1st council meeting, where there was a public discussion about this. We went through the 30-day Comprehensive Plan public review period on the city council version of the draft Comprehensive Plan in October, and that brings us more or less to this evening.
So can you, you know, I appreciate sharing the communication plan, and I apologize for my poor memory on remembering, but was there a part of the plan that, you know, targeted people who don't live here but do own property?
Can I ask what you mean by targeted? Are you asking, did we mail something to addresses? In that case, no.
How would somebody find out? I guess is, in effect, the question.
Well, they would find out across our communications channels. So social media updates, council meeting updates, public hearing notices.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Counsel, is there a motion to schedule ordinance number 24C-18 for second reading and adoption on December 3, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. Counsel, any discussion? Okay, City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Jacobson. Councilmember Reynolds, is your microphone touching your laptop?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Jacobson. Councilmember Andron.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
And Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion passes. Our next item of regular business is AB 6557, the 2025 state legislative priority adoption. We welcome management analyst Robbie Cunningham Adams. Welcome.
Good evening, counsel. I'll have Ally share the PowerPoint. Great. Good evening, counsel, again, for the record, my name is Robbie Cunningham Adams, senior management analyst in the city manager's office. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the potential adoption of the 2025 state legislative priorities. Next slide, please. So a little bit of logistics. So the state legislative session in 2025 this year will be a long session. So this means 105-day session rather than the short 60-day session that occurs in even years. Long sessions occur during the beginning of the state's two-year budget cycle and include the process of adopting the 2025 to 2027 state budget. So while the exact dates of the session are not yet finalized by the legislature, we do anticipate the session will start on January 13th and hopefully conclude on April 27th. Next slide, please. So staff and council have already been doing a lot of work to get prepared for the session. So we've prepared for you tonight the draft legislative priorities and strategy. We've been reviewing the draft priorities from our other partner associations, such as Association of Washington Cities, ARCH, and the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs. We've also been in collaboration with AWC and attended their legislative session preps. And we're already reviewing proposed bill language. We've received a few that we're currently looking at. Next slide, please. So the purpose of legislative priorities are to allow the city and you, council, to engage on issues with legislators directly, quickly, and efficiently. So hopefully, this document will provide high-level goals of the city, and that allow us to widely engage with the really specific language and bill writing that we'll be working on in the coming months. Next slide, please. So the drafts, state legislative priorities are included in your packet as exhibit one. I'm not going to go every little line, although we'll have the opportunity to do that later if you would like, but I'm going to do a high kind of flyover of the main themes. So next slide, please. First main bucket is kind of our primary funding ask, which is capital funding for the emergency placement of the city's sole water source. Counsel, you're well aware of this summer's water leak emergency we declared, and we're currently in the design phase of a new replacement water supply pipeline. And we're hoping to seek $3 million in state funding to support the costs of that project. We view this as really basic infrastructure. This is water. This is our drinking water and sufficient water pressure for fire response. One thing I want you to be aware of, counsel, is that in the recent November financial forecast for the state budget, they are forecasting a deficit. And a financial deficit at the state level is certainly a headwind against successfully securing state funding. But we really believe, especially this is basic infrastructure, that it's imperative that we ask and seek as much help as we can get. And because of the state financial situation, we may want to consider, you know, that this is our primary funding ask. Next slide, please. Public safety, this is one of our primary priorities, and it's certainly going to be a primary theme of this upcoming session. You know, our asks are focused on increased capacity for the, really, the supply of police officers, and so increasing the capacity of our regional law enforcement academies and continued and increased support for cities' hiring officers in adopting public safety technologies. I know we're also really excited to get the state to help us with more support on policy and funding for reducing auto and organized retail theft. You know, a big theme that we'll be championing certainly as a city is safe state regulations for the safe and appropriate use of e-bikes and e-scooters, as well as our continued use of, you know, a regional provider of water safety, public safety resources. Next slide, please. We want to build on last year's success on getting, you know, helping push through increased fentanyl education measures. And so we want to continue to get the resources that YFS needs. So it's an increase in prevention and intervention resources, targeting opiates and other substance abuse, and expansion of behavioral health services, and expansion of our existing, you know, integrated behavioral health and first responder crisis response. You know, what we heard from YFS is that we wanted the focus, you know, on these is on youth, young adults, and seniors. Next slide, please. Affordable housing, housing and land use has been recently a main theme of the legislative session. We don't expect anything differently in 2025. So we, as a city, continue to, you know, push for transit-oriented development. And it's really important that these have affordability requirements, you know, similar to the measures we just discussed in Town Center, you know, the integrated of the city's housing targets under HB 1220. Next slide, please. Building on something we started doing last year, continuing to advocate with the legislator to focus transportation funds, first and foremost, on preservation and maintenance of our critical state infrastructure. Obviously, I-90 is really important to the city for safety, for commerce, and keeping it operational and reliable is probably our number-one priority on state infrastructure. So making sure that the legislator's fully funding, you know, those operations and, you know, critical maintenance on those infrastructures and supporting us as a city as we help maintain transportation infrastructure. Next slide, please. Lastly, counsel, we have a really excellent climate action plan as a city, and we want to kind of focus our asks at the state of policy and funding that supports our implementation of our own goals and our climate action plan. And what that document is super helpful in engaging with legislators, especially as we're probably expecting some pretty complicated bill language, you know, on climate and sustainability, and that'll give us a great kind of base point to engage on. Next slide, please. Counsel, in your packet, you probably noticed we included partner legislative priorities, those from AWC and ARCH. We certainly, you know, participate in learning about and shaping those priorities, and we take them into consideration when we develop ours. Those are there for your reference. Next slide, please. Tonight, counsel, we're hoping to adopt a final text version of legislative priorities. They, don't worry, they won't end as a boring Word document. We'll gloss them up a bit after the text is finalized. Hopefully, tonight, they'll look similar to the feel of last year's legislative priorities, which is in your packet. Once they're finalized by council, we're going to send these far and wide. So certainly, it'll be on the website, on our kind of local, on our city communication channels. We'll send them to the 41st Legislative Delegation and to other legislative partners in AWC. So final slide is, you know, a suggested motion of adopting them. I have the Word document version of the legislative priorities if we want, if there's any suggested edits. Happy to take any questions.
Okay. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Jacobson. Well, my hand just went down. All right. Counsel, any questions, any discussion? Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah. Councilmember Wyker and I attended the AWC Region 7 meeting yesterday, and this was a pretty... it was interesting to hear from a lot of cities about sort of what they're expecting for the upcoming session, as well as, you know, what their challenges look like currently and, you know, what they sort of see as important. And it feels like, you know, we're in a, we're in a pretty good, you know, we have a lot of company with a lot of these issues, so I think there's going to be a lot of opportunity for collaboration. I want to thank the staff in advance, because it's going to be a long, a long session, obviously, but I know we appreciate all the work that you do to keep abreast of everything going on down there and give us the opportunity to engage with the right stakeholders and build coalitions. So thanks in advance, and let's hope the power stays on here.
Yeah, we're, if anybody's noticing the rush pace, because the power's flickering and the batteries are beeping. Councilmember Jacobson.
Yes, I'd like to commend the staff for putting together, I think, a very good and focused plan or wish list to commit to the legislature and, or to pursue it. Let us... focused plan or wishlist to commit to the legislature and, or to pursue it at the state legislative level. There's one item in the AWC wishlist, the increase of the automatic levy lift from 1% to 3%, that I think needs somewhat more consideration, because there's some ought and evidence of the proposition that should cities decide to do the 3%, they may have one hell of a time passing levies for things like police and public works buildings and these kinds of things. So I want to be of record, my concern that we're careful not to be willingly going along with tax increases, when it's in our interest to preserve our ability to go to our citizenry for financing critical public facilities financing, which is only a matter of time, not, it's planned, not if.
Okay. I'm going to hazard a motion before we lose power here, just to get this on the record. So counsel, is there a motion to adopt the city Mercer Island 2025 state legislative priorities substantially in the form attached as Exhibit 1 to AB 6557?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. Counsel, any discussion? Not seeing any, City Clerk, please call the roll before we lose power.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion passes. Thank you for that. We now move to the business and planning schedule, and we welcome City Manager Jesse Bond.
Thank you. And counsel, I do want to let you know, we did just lose power, but we are running on generator right now, and I've confirmed that we are still broadcasting. I don't have a report tonight on the planning schedule. Let's proceed.
Okay, Councilmember reports. Anything to report? Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
No.
I have nothing to report. Councilmember Wyker?
Nothing.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Yep, so the K4C Outreach Committee met on November 8th, and the committee was delighted to hear about Mercer Island's receipt of $100,000 grant for building our electric vehicle charging infrastructure plan. There are likely several other small cities in the county who will want to leverage our plan to build theirs. I informed them about our intended timeline and phased approach, and there was some discussion about the Commerce Department's next $120 million of funding for EV charging infrastructure, now that the Climate Commitment Act has more life following the election. We're also going to be reaching out to the Electric Vehicle Commission on the, of the Commerce Department to work on getting more EV service equipment technicians trained at community colleges. And there was some discussion about the likelihood of the one initiative that passed, passing in court. Secondly, we had an Arts Council meeting in this room last night. The Arts Council agreed with the Parks Commission's recommendation that the public art be included as an acceptable land use in the park zone. The Arts Council also recommended that the regulation of the installation of art pieces in the city remain with the Arts Council, rather than embedding that into development or zoning code development standards. And the bulk of the meeting was spent reviewing the, and prioritizing, a list of 26 art project ideas for the six-year plan, which included ideas submitted by community members and Arts Council members and by the staff. And finally, there's been a change of location for my next monthly open brunch, as Alister's is no longer open on Sundays. We're going to try them again on Saturday in December, but for the November brunch, it's going to be still on Sunday, November 24th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Crawl Space Gastro Pub. As always, all are welcome. It's an open agenda, and you can discuss anything you want. And all I ask is that everybody show the respect to the chef by ordering some food and/or beverage, and let me know if you're coming, so we can reserve a large enough table.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reynolds, any report?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Andrell.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Jacobson.
I'll make a report about Sophia Sway, Sophia Way's great success in finding housing for women at the next meeting, rather than take the time on our battery now.
Okay, thank you. The next meeting, the next hybrid meeting of the city council is scheduled for Tuesday, November 19, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. The time is now 6:33 p.m. The city council will go into executive session for approximately 90 minutes. One, for planning and adopting the strategy or position to be taken in the city council during the course of any collective bargaining, professional negotiations, or grievance or mediation proceedings, or reviewing the proposals made in the negotiations or proceedings while in progress pursuant to RCW 42.30.1404B. Two, to discuss with legal counsel pending or potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101i. And three, to consider the selection of a site where the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase, when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101B. And four, to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101G. As a reminder, counsel, please stay seated until the city has terminated the broadcast. Good evening, and thanks for joining us tonight.